All right, welcome to the July 2nd Planning Board meeting on the agenda this evening. Do you all feel comfortable reviewing the minutes? Yeah?
I have done.
Okay, so we're going to review the minutes from June 18th. We are going to get an update from Jan Ackerman from the Affordable Housing Trust Committee on the Glendale Middle Road property under consideration for an affordable housing development. We will review. We'll have review and discussion with Jan Ackerman from the Affordable Housing Trust Committee on the Affordable Housing Production Plan and agenda items for next meeting. So, welcome, everybody. Before we start, we'll start with reviewing the minutes, but then when we move on to the other agenda items, I'm going to ask that if you'd like to speak, that you go up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself, okay? Thank you. All right, so minutes from June 18th, everyone's looked them over? Any changes?
No, I've moved to approve.
Do we have a... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, okay. Next up, we have Jan Ackerman. Do you want to come on up and give us an update on the Glendale Middle Road property?
So, this will be rather short because we're very much at the early stage of this whole process. As I think you all know, we accepted the donation of the property and the deed has been completed, so it's in place. The trust has asked for a survey to be done of the property. That was completed. And along with, we're in the midst right now of a follow-up to that survey, couple of the boundaries of the land that were still a little unclear, so we're trying to get clarity on all of that. So, that's in place. And I think it's fair to say, we've spent a fair amount of time talking about how we're going to proceed in terms of moving forward with exploring a development on that property. And so, there are a couple of, both at the state level and at the regional level, there are planning assistance programs that, you know, have people who are very knowledgeable about affordable housing, the processes one would go through, and all the steps involved in that process, as well as the funding sources that might be available, and probably much more knowledgeable than some of us on the trust right now would be. So, we're exploring and talking with a number of those state and regional areas to try to get, determine which one we might want to work with. Some are just direct, they give you assistance, others, you have to apply for a grant, which is a planning grant, and then they award them. So, we're in the midst of that. I know a number of my colleagues have been having those conversations over the past several weeks. I've been away on vacation, so I'm not up to speed on exactly those, what they've learned. But we do have a meeting on Monday, next Monday, and so I'm sure that'll be part of the discussion, and you are more than welcome to attend, either in person or, you know, on Zoom, or listen to it afterwards to get an update on where we are on that. Another thing that we are starting to do, along with the help of Michael Canales, is to try to get an idea of what the infrastructure costs might be, because those could be significant, depending on the size of the development that might go in there. So, I'm talking about sewer and water and road primarily. So, what we're doing is, we've said, for a smaller development and then for a larger development, which has nothing other than to get a range of costs that might be involved. So, we're trying to get that, so we have some idea of what the infrastructure costs. Again, there are grants that can be, that we could apply for to help cover some of the infrastructure costs, once we learn that, if it makes sense to move forward on that.
Are those state grants?
Some of them are state grants, yes. So, that's really where we are in terms of the overall planning. I think there's, there'll be some more discussion of it, as I said, at the meeting on Monday. You're very welcome to come to that, and I would encourage you, if you're interested in this as it moves forward, to either attend our meetings, or we can get updates from those meetings that you'll be able to see online from all of that.
Are you on Zoom like we are when you do those?
Yes, we are. So, any questions?
I'll let other board members start. I have a couple of questions. So, how many units are we talking? Are there individual homes, or are they condos, or what are you thinking of?
Well, we haven't, we haven't reached a decision on that, because there are lots of different options, and of course, the financing might be different for different options, both rental versus homeownership, and the number of bedrooms, which is in part what drives some of the infrastructure costs. So, we're really trying to get an idea of the range of costs that might be involved, and then also what the process would be. And then we can zero in on what makes sense in terms of size of a development, and, you know, because there are, there are on the property from the feasibility study, there are essentially three areas that were identified as potential building sites. So, we...
And how many, how many units? What's the maximum number of units that you're considering?
Well, I think that that's premature to say that at this point, because the feasibility study had a large number of units. I don't think anybody on the trust is thinking of going down that road, so...
Is there consensus on the trust as to the number of units that you would have?
There is not at this point. I mean, there's not, we haven't had a firm discussion about how many units we put on there, because in part, we want to understand the infrastructure costs and what the implication of that is before we move forward on some of that.
Are there wetland issues also?
There are some wetlands in there, so, and those are identified in the feasibility study that was done.
I'm new to this, so where on Glendale Middle Road is this? What's it next to?
Old Town Dump.
Right.
The what?
The Old Town Dump is going to be one of the borderlines of it.
Okay.
Do you know where that is?
No, I don't.
I didn't think so.
Where's the Old Town Dump?
You go past the...
The road, so that you go over the railroad bridge.
On the left, on the left.
On the left-hand side is the old dump.
Wayne?
Has it been fully confirmed that that access off the road is big enough to do what you're proposing?
Yes.
It has been?
And what does the Housing Trust fund? How do they, like, the money that you have, that the trust has, how is that used towards this development?
Well, I think right now, the only thing that's been used is to do the survey.
Sure.
And, but one of the issues in our planning, as I was talking about, is we need to identify funding sources, again, at the state and other levels, you know, for what might be needed. So, the trust right now doesn't have enough funding to do a development there.
Yeah.
So, it would have to come from a number of other sources, and we need to be working on that, and we'll be working on that.
So, would feasibly have, like, sections at a time, not the whole thing, all done at once?
It could be. I mean, some of these questions, I think, we're very much at the beginning of the process, so we're not, we're not at a point where I could say, or any one of the trusts could say, "It's this," or "That is our plan." We aren't to that point.
Okay, thank you. Can you answer, I mean, can you say, would these all be subsidized housing units?
I won't say, I can't say that at this point, no. I mean, the trust is really focused on affordable housing.
Right, but I'm talking about specifically the Glendale Middle Road project.
Yes.
So, if you're looking at state grants, does that mean that there are strings attached, right?
Well, there will be some affordable housing under, as you're saying, subsidized, but it, which has state or federal money. I mean, that's part of what we're about, Affordable Housing Trust. So, whether that will be the only units that are up there, we don't know at this point.
Okay. I think it would be really helpful if, I realize you guys are on Zoom, and I realize, you know, you have your meetings and that we're invited, but I think it would be really helpful if, you know, maybe Liz, you can provide us with, not everybody, you know, may feel they have the time to attend your meetings or even watch them, they're long, I have watched some of them.
I write copious notes. Everything that's on, in our meeting is in the notes, so...
So, maybe you can, at some of our meetings, provide us with, I'll put you on the agenda for updates.
Okay.
That'll be, I think that would be helpful. You can summarize. We don't...
Well, it's just a lot of information, so I would, I would think that if you would all take a look at the, you know, when you look online, they're posted, that way you can get a sense of what we've done, because there's a lot of information.
We can do that, but I think it would also be good to just have updates at planning board meetings. Yeah, and that way, you know, anybody, if anybody actually watches planning board meetings, they'll get that information too, so...
How often do you meet?
I want to say every three weeks or so. About, it varies, and it's going to vary over the summer based on people's vacations, about every three weeks.
Okay, let's see, we've got, if you can please tell me, introduce people on Zoom, can you introduce, just quickly introduce yourselves, so we know who's there on Zoom? I know Jackie, can you start, please? Hi, Jackie.
Hi, 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 everyone. I'm Jackie Harris, I'm a butter to the property that we're discussing.
Thank you.
This is Karen Sonnenborg, I'm the consultant to the Housing Production Plan.
Thank you. And who else is there? I can't, I can see your picture, but I don't know who you are.
Peter Ungaro.
Peter Ungaro, I'm just a Stockbridge resident.
Okay. Anybody else on Zoom? Is that it, Jan? Okay, great. Any comments from, from the Zoom, or folks here in the audience? Any questions, comments? Come on up, introduce yourselves, and fly your way.
Can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Jan, you mentioned there's a meeting on Monday?
I think so, yeah.
I don't think it's in the calendar. I'm looking at the town calendar, and I don't see it noted. At what point would that meeting be confirmed?
By tomorrow. By tomorrow, we'll get it up.
By tomorrow, and do you know what time it might be?
I think, well, we talked about having it at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, so it's going to be early. You know, a lot of times when we talk about affordable housing, people think that that is associated with low income. Is the Housing Trust looking at this more broadly in terms of low and moderate income housing?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and I haven't had a chance to completely review the 414-page environmental study associated with the work that's been undertaken by the town, but I'm still baffled by why, if we're going to be looking at the property from the viewpoint of potential three areas of development, why there weren't specifics associated with how they arrived at potential 72 units on that site. Is that a concern, or is, I mean, I would think the town would be concerned about that aspect of the work that's been done. It'll help us to more clearly think through density, parking, you know, those kinds of issues. So, I just wanted to know if you could comment on that for a second.
Well, I think, Jackie, that's probably something that is better for discussion at the trust meetings, not the planning board, because there are other trust members who are not here right now, and so we'd be happy to have that discussion next week.
Oh, okay. I'm assuming, though, that at some point, the planning committee may have eroded as this goes through, and so it may be of interest in terms of the overall planning for the town, you know, how that, how that number was derived, but thanks so much.
It would be good to have updates, if you can provide us, just, you know, I'll put it on the agenda, and if, Liz, you can just, at planning board meetings, I'm going to put it on the agenda going forward.
Is it okay to say that we didn't ask for, you know, they just did, you know, as much as they could put in there, but it was not something that we asked for, for 72? That was, it shocked us all, so, you know.
It was a feasibility study, so they proposed.
So, they went from the most to the least with their feasibility of the project? 72 was the max?
Yes.
And to Kate's question, do you remember what type of units those were when it was 72?
Those were buildings that had, I believe, four units in the building and multiple buildings around a little, like, all of a sudden, yeah.
So, you're counting units as four per building, totally?
In that scenario, but that is not...
No.
It's not...
I just want to make sure I'm understanding units as opposed to buildings.
Okay, anything else? Anyone on Zoom? We're still on Glendale Middle Road. I assume you folks are from Glendale Middle Road area? Questions, comments, just listening in?
Just listening in, seeing what's being proposed from what is, because it was proposed in 88 and the town shot it down. No water, no sewer, no road frontage.
You come on, come on up, please. Your name, please?
Tom Forbes. I, I bought where they're going to put the road in. The only reason why they have the road frontage to put it in is back in the day one Swan owned it, they approached the town to put up 12 houses back there. The town shot them down, not enough road frontage, not enough water on the street to pull off of that, to go in. I can testify to that. I lost my house 11 years ago, because there wasn't enough water to put the fire out, and there's no sewer. Everything on that road is injection sewer line. It has to go over the river, so they put grinders in for everybody there. They also told Swan that they can put one house and hook it up to the sewer line. There's not enough infrastructure on that to do it. So, in order to go forward with this, you, as the town, have to modify Glendale Middle Road before you can even go over and think about putting houses in. Now, my mother-in-law sold a right-of-way to Swan. There was no deed at right-of-way to get into that property. My mother-in-law sold them 57 feet, which is a single road going in. There's not enough road frontage still to put a double road in there, which I believe is part of the bylaws for Stockbridge. You have to have a double-lane road that two cars can pass on if you're putting in more than one house. Now, I don't, I've, I've got all the paperwork home on what they proposed. They proposed 19 houses back in there to start with, which is all well and good. I can see 19 back there, but double quad houses back there, it's going, I hate to say it, it's going to be another Pinewood. You're going to have multiple buildings back there. If I remember the quote in the paper from Hans, he wanted to see affordable housing back there that fit the neighborhood. There's no apartment complex on that road. There's nothing there. They're single-family housing. To me, it's ludicrous to set up something like that back there.
Thank you. I do have a follow, Jan, can you, I do have a follow-up question to, I'm sorry, your name is Tom?
Yeah.
Tom's, Tom's comment. I mean, how are you going to look at this when, you know, the infrastructure is going to, going to be incredibly expensive, I assume, and the state is not going to put that kind of money into infrastructure for just, you know, a small number of units, or so I'm told? So, how will you balance?
Who's told you that?
Michael. So, how will you balance, you know, what the state is willing to do, given taxpayer subsidies for the infrastructure, with doing something that is, you know, more modest in scale and fits, and, you know, fits in with the character of the town, and in particular the surrounding neighborhood?
Okay, so, first of all, that is not our plan to do 72 units. I think we've said that multiple times. And we have, as I've said, we are looking at what the infrastructure costs would be for different-sized developments, a small one, kind of larger one, so we get a range of that. I happen to know that in Great Barrington, there were some grants that were given to develop some of the properties there for infrastructure, and some millions of dollars. So, I don't know if we would be eligible for that or not. I don't know what the infrastructure costs we'd be looking at are, but it's still early at this stage to know the answers to all of it.
I understand, you know, I'm just...
And I do think, to, to your point, Tom, there's, between the 57 feet that your mother-in-law sold and the property that was there previously combined, there is enough to put in a two-lane.
But it was never a deed at right-of-way there at all. It was word of mouth, there was never any deed at right-of-way. That's how my father-in-law got half of that piece of property, because nobody owned it, he maintained it for a certain amount of years, and it got put into his deed. That's how my mother-in-law sold them the right-of-way.
Great Barrington, you mentioned Great Barrington, and I realize, you know, this is all gathering information stage and so on, but, you know, I just, you're here, so I'll ask the question. Do you happen to know the number, when you mentioned that millions in infrastructure was funded by the state? Do you happen to know the size of the project that was, was funded to that amount?
I will have to go back.
Okay.
It's the one that's in...
And I understand, these are just, you know, this is just, just here so we can learn what we can, so I'm not looking to, yeah, thank you. Is it the one by the senior center down there that you're talking about, where the state paid for?
I think it's the one that's in Housatonic.
Okay. All right, Patrick, did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify a few things. It's important to remember that...
I know you, everyone here knows you, but if you can just...
Oh, Patrick, why?
Thank you.
It's important to clarify first that this was a generous donation by Hans and Kate for us to explore a housing solution, and if it doesn't, if it becomes impossible to build the housing, it goes into open space. So, the first thing is, it's, it's really early in the process, first to know what might or might not happen. Many of us are on record who are on the trust as, as like, as looking for a relatively modest number of homes. I think to your point about the single-family homes, I personally, by the record, am saying five to eight, but we'll see what the trust wants to do. I would also point out that, to your, to the question you had about whether they're subsidized or not, until we know what kind of revenue stream we have to fund this, we're not going to be able to know whether or not they're 100% subsidized. So, for example, if, if one of the, you know, if a parcel looks to contain units or more somewhere else, and $400,000 comes into a trust, that could create a subsidy enough on a modular, a single-family home to create possibly four, four units if, if the, if the infrastructure was paid for with a grant, let's say. And because that's local money, that could allow us to preference locals, which is the whole point of why we're doing this, you know, not to just arbitrarily build affordable housing. So, I strongly support...
I'm sorry, what, I didn't catch what you just said.
I said, I said, I said, the, from the genesis of the Stockbridge Affordable Housing Trust to date, the purpose of this has been to provide housing for, for the children of locals and local workers, you know, people like Officer Slater, who had to buy in Pissmo because she...
Okay, but just to ask you a question about that, is that, and I asked Randy this question too, is that even, I mean, my understanding as to, you know, how affordable housing, subsidized housing works, at least at Heaton Court, is that there's a list, and people go online from anywhere in the country, and they say, okay, you know, I'd like to be here.
There are people on that list, it's crazy.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, they might be in California, they could be anywhere, and they say...
Five towns.
Can I just finish, please? Thank you. You know, and they, they pick out a place where, you know, they think they'd like to be. So, how is it possible that, how is it possible that this is going to be for...
That's why it's so important to use, find local funding sources for this. And we're, obviously, we're not going to do it with the general revenues from the town's tax base. The only way to do it is on something like the residential inclusion or the bylaw, and that may never happen. We have no idea, some of these ideas may just be like pie in the sky, and nothing will ever come of them, you know, but I don't think you don't try, because you're maybe you're afraid to fail. I mean, I have no idea if, if, if...
A question for you, in terms of the infrastructure, I mean, even at a baseline level, that's got to be millions of dollars, right? Even at the low level.
If you did three houses, you know, it's conceivable, since it's three building lots, that you could do septic and a, and a, and a well. I have no idea, you know, but I think that the root, the fact is that there's a lot of variables here, and I think the point Jan was trying to make is, we're just at the beginning of this process. We had an opportunity, Hans said, "I'm willing to donate this, free their open space for housing," we accepted it, and we are absolutely at square one, and I think the neighbors have made a lot of really great points. I think that, I think that it is unlikely, absent, it's not just bringing the infrastructure into that, that parcel, you'd have to improve the infrastructure coming all the way from 102 to get to that parcel, because there is not the capacity in those pipes.
So, I guess the reason I asked that question was that I wanted to know, like, and I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this, okay? I mean, I have spent some time on the plan, but, you know, you guys, as a trust, you meet, so you're much more immersed in it, and, but it's important for planning board members to have updates and, you know, to be engaged too. So, if the state invests, say, you know, four million in infrastructure, does that, are there, and I'm, you know, roads, sewer, water? Are there, are there then strings attached to that?
I don't know, that's a really good question.
Okay.
And frankly, personally, I'd rather do three units where we control, like, the local placement of folks, than 30 units where it had to be opened up for a list of 1,700. I mean, look, we're trying to solve our local problems, we're not just trying to...
My recommendation, my suggestion, is that you stick to local funds and local control on this project, yeah?
And like I said, I don't...
That's what I would vote for.
I don't know, I don't know if it's, if any of this is going to be possible.
And 19 units is going to be a lot too.
Yeah.
It's going to be an impact for the folks who live in the area.
So, where are the 19?
I thought I heard you say 19. I haven't heard you say 19. Someone said 19.
Sorry, I think Tom Forbes, I think Tom said 19, but I think, just to clarify, I believe that the document that was submitted to the town had 19 buildings with four units in each building, so there may be some confusion there.
Okay, thank you.
And that was simply what Forsythe felt for land support.
Understood, yeah.
It was not at all by us.
Yeah, understood.
So, two, two questions on, is there anybody looking now at the cost of the infrastructure to build it from 102 to that location? Is there somebody on that? Is there somebody on that now or is regional planning looking at that? Or, and the second thing would be with the, if we funded it locally, you do have the right to.
Preference.
Preference, you do.
That's the whole point of it, yeah.
Because Heaton Court is not that.
That's not, Heaton Court was built with, with state and federal funds. And Heaton Court is owned by the state of Massachusetts, that's the big difference there. You know, that is, that is state-owned public housing. Yeah, you only have X number of dollars in the bank and X number of dollars in income to get into Heaton Court. You can't even have savings. It's a, it's a whole different type of housing from what we're looking at.
Is somebody, is regional planning looking at the cost of the infrastructure?
Yeah.
To the location?
Yep, and, and, and going back to like, even if, if you had to do septic and, and, and wells, okay? And we got no money from, from, let's say, residential inclusion or by law, then the path to do that would be maybe you say you do five units and you sell two of them at market and use that local money to fund the three that you want subsidized. So there's a path to do a subsidized deal, no matter how we want to do it, you know? And that's, that answers the question on whether or not they're all subsidized or not. So if you can put a modular, single family home in, like Sally did, that house cost, including the land, $350,000, including the water, sewer, but not including the land, $350,000. All right, so let's say somebody on a, on a, you know, police force salary or teacher salary could afford a $250,000 mortgage, they'll have to come up with $100,000 subsidies. So selling two market units to them could pay all the subsidies we need to beat the other three. And once again, we don't take any money. We still have to put in the road, we still have to figure out some of those costs. And I doubt that for three units, we're going to get anybody subsidized the road. So even that may not be possible, I don't know. You know, but you know, it's.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions about this agenda item, I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is Dan again. And we're on to the, the, the Affordable Housing Trust Committee Affordable Housing Production Plan. So this is it, folks, it should be posted on our website. This is the draft dated June 2024. Is it posted on the website?
It is.
Okay.
It's, it was posted also with the agenda.
But is it posted on the website outside of the agenda?
Yes, it's on the town website.
Okay.
And I actually sent to the entire committee, I'm sorry, Eric, maybe not you.
I forwarded it to him, he has it.
On June 10th.
I didn't print it out.
Yeah.
It is a long document.
I stopped, I stopped here Monday, but Town Hall was closed Monday.
Oh, okay. No, I went, I came in Monday and got a copy. Yeah, well, we're not, there's, there's no.
Anyway, it's.
We're just talking today, so. Ask Michael to print you a copy or Jennifer?
Yeah.
And they will.
I'll pick one up tomorrow if I can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I still recommend that you make this, this table of contents clickable. It's a really easy thing to do in, in Word, because if you're looking at it online on your, on your laptop or desktop, it just makes it a lot easier to be able to click on those table of contents and not have to scroll all the way down through this. How many pages is it? 116 pages. Okay, so, all right, so where are we?
So along with the revised housing production plan that we sent out early in June, I also included a copy, which Karen helped draft, of the, all of the pages that we made. And to try to do that in two pages so that you don't have to read through the entire 117 pages again to try to figure out the page. And in that draft, I included the things that responded to comments that planning board back in April, when we met the first time to discuss the housing production fund, all of your comments and what we've changed to accommodate that, as well as the comments from the community forum, including some from Jackie and others in the room here, and, and also from the select board, because we met with the select board back in April as well, and they had a number of comments. So I, I'm going to assume that you've all had the opportunity, including those in the audience, to read through this two-page thing. It was posted with the, the meeting agenda. And so I'm not going to go through every single item, worry you, but.
No, no, you don't need to go through everything.
I'm very happy to respond to any questions you have at this point about it, about the housing production plan or, or to clarify anything, so. Let me know.
Good for now. Okay, I guess I'll start. All right, so let's see, the table of contents, I mean, not the table of contents, table 1.1, 1-1 on page six, zoning strategies. I was curious as to why short-term rentals, I mean, were not listed there as, as a, something to look at. I mean, I noticed there was a housing forum at BCC and even the person quoted in the paper from the state housing talked about, you know, ADUs, which is, the legislature is, has not put out their parameters on that yet, but even that person talked about short-term rentals as an obvious area for, for review. And I feel that short-term rentals in Stockbridge are something that we should be considering because, you know, that's part of your missing middle housing. So I'd like to know why that is not listed under the second section of zoning strategies.
Well, I think that in going over and reviewing that, Kate, it was very clear to the trust members that the planning board itself has a significant interest in doing this short-term rentals by law and in changing it, so.
I think you should list it, I mean, you've listed, ADUs is listed, identify modest opportunities for a wider range of housing choices in specific areas, promote multifamily and mixed-use development, and then near the downtown. I'm, I'm just going to make the suggestion and, and ask that you include in that section, short-term rentals.
Well, I think that the trust would be very supportive of working with you on modifying the short-term rentals. We're not opposed to that at all, but it's not, it's not a major driving force in terms of creating affordable housing.
Short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals.
Okay, I disagree, I think that it is. So I'm, I'm, you know, we can leave it, we can agree to disagree, but, and I'm happy to hear that the trust would like to work with us, but this is a policy document. And I'm going to ask, that's my recommendation and my suggestion, that search room rentals be included in that section. And we can, we can leave it there and.
We can consider taking comments for each section that you're.
By all means, come on up.
Um, Kate, I completely agree with you. I think that, I think that the, the purpose, I had this conversation with Randy and Jen. We were trying to show deference to the planning board by not weighing in in terms of, what is clearly your prerogative, which is zoning, zoning changes. So it wasn't lack of interest in looking at it, it was a feeling that this is your value link. And, but having said that, you know, the governor's, the governor's bond bill is going to allow ADUs by right. What Lee just did, where they limit the short-term rental to one of the two units and the other being under occupied, is something I think that should be a high priority.
Yeah.
They've already written the bylaw, Lee put it on the books in, in May, because otherwise you're potentially putting two cash flows on one property and that's going to be able to be done by right. Every single family home by right in Massachusetts, in a month from now, when, when Governor Haley signs that, is going to have the right to that. And so you are absolutely spot on right and, and I think it's great. Adding a paragraph to that is fine, if you want to draft it, I would just get it from Randy or Jen or Karen and, you know.
In this section here?
Yeah.
Sure, I can do that. Okay, so that's that one. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to just, yeah, I was hoping.
Yeah, we're good, thank you. You can sit down, you can sit down, yep. Sewer needs analysis. I, I saw that that's expected sometime around this summer. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I don't know when the, it's commissioned by the town, not by the trust. So I think when, when it does come in, we will review that and see what, what it may have to do with the housing production plan.
Okay, okay, so that will be incorporated into, information from that will be incorporated into the plan?
Well, I don't have a plan. I, I don't know that it needs to be in the plan, we're referring to it and the town will have a plan for.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. Let's see, what else? Did you have a chance to talk to Jamie? I know we talked about that.
I reached out to Jamie multiple times.
Okay.
She did not respond.
Okay.
That she wanted to talk.
I know, my next question is subsidized housing units. So currently, the plan shows we are at 113, is that right?
Total of the town.
Sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, 113. So I was curious as to whether, does that include, there's some properties around town that look to me like they're rentals and that they might, you know, fall into that category? And I'm just sort of trying to understand the landscape for, for affordable housing in town. One of them is on East Street, it's sort of a low lying, it almost looks like a motel, multifamily type thing. Do you know the property I mean? It's owned by somebody from Lake.
Across the street, it's yellow, it was a motel years ago and it's probably got six or seven.
It's in there, isn't it?
No.
It's apartments, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty unattractive.
Apartments and the house is rented out, I think there's two to three in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's owned by someone from Lakeville, Connecticut. And I'm just, you know, it might be interesting to see what the rents there are and, and whether they're, they're clearly not included in the.
That's a subsidized inventory, it has nothing to do with whether or not an apartment is cheaper, it has to do with the subsidy.
I know, but it would be interesting to know, you know, what else is in the affordable range, I would find it interesting. And then there's also, I mean, because you're not just talking about subsidized housing, it sounds like from the plan. So I think it would be interesting to know. I mean, if I was in the business of looking at affordable housing in town, I'd want to know. And then the other is that the industrial park, I think there's some apartments down there too.
15.
15?
There is 15.
Yeah, yeah.
They're in the old state building, there used to be a state garage there that they.
No kidding? Okay, we, my, my husband and I drove down in that area to take a look because I was, you know, curious and I didn't realize it was the old state garage.
I talked to Mr. Zabian, he's actually expressing interest in potentially doing.
Would you come on up, please? Thank you.
He's expressing interest in potentially doing a subsidized project down there.
Mr. Zabian? So he owns, he owns the entire, entire manufacturing park? Yeah, okay. And there's 15 units down there?
I think it's 15, there's that table house and there's several single family homes down there. Oh, Randy, you're here, I didn't see you before.
So that's, you know, it sounds like that's on top of the subsidized, and you know, I think it'd be really interesting to know the rents down there, do you know this?
I have no idea, they're, they're pretty bad.
I've gone up, yeah, so five, it's a seller's market right now for rentals, some of them have been doubling.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be good to know. So that was a question I had. And then, let's see. I did have a recommendation for another change, it's a pretty minor one. It's on page 62. At the bottom of the page, this is under the section, what section is this? And it reads, it has to, the heading is adopt zoning for accessory dwelling units. And then at the very end, the last paragraph, it reads, "The planning board should revisit the proposed ADU bylaw and move to finalize the new zoning and have it adopted by town meeting." I would change that to finalize the new zoning for review at town meeting?
ADU bylaws move, so I don't see why it needs to be in there, yeah.
So if, I mean, I mean, it's with the legislature, but there's also, you know, my understanding is there will be, you know, we can have local.
Yeah, limited uses.
Yeah.
It's not the right to do it.
Right, right, and I'm hoping setbacks and things like that.
I would think, I'm.
You don't know?
I don't know, I, I believe there's some things you can do, you just can't, you can't ban them.
So setbacks might not be negotiable?
I mean, I don't know, I haven't gotten that far in the region.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll get more information.
It's in the conference committee now, so until they.
Right.
Actually pass something.
Who's on the, do you know who's on the committee?
I don't know, but I believe it's just like, you know, it's usually just three people in the House and three people in the Senate. And they're all like, the president, the senator, the chair of the ways and means, I mean.
Would Senator Mark be in it, by any chance? Okay, all right, okay, that's all I have for questions, so. Are there any, did I cut everybody on Zoom? Jackie, do you have a question?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to thank the planning committee, as well as the Housing Affordable Committee for all the hard work you've done on this housing production plan, as well as Karen. So, and I know some of the revisions that have been made have come about as a result of your listening, you know, to, uh, community residents, so I deeply, deeply appreciate that. I've just had a couple of questions about, um, the plan, I think, envisions 25 units. I think that's the minimum that you can, potential units that you can use in the plan in order to qualify for, for, as a, as a policy document. Do you envision any changes to that number at this moment in time?
Not in the.
Sorry?
Not in the housing production plan, no.
Okay, um, thanks. I also am a little concerned that, you know, we've brought up in some of the meetings the need to identify current town property as potential development sites. And what I marvelled at is Michael's knowledge with respect, Michael Canales' logic with respect to properties that are town-owned. But I think the document would be better if there was a map that showed where the town-owned property is because there seem to be, like, for example, recently I brought up like the fire department, you know, there may be some consolidations of services in the regional area and so that might be a potential, you know, housing site. And every time I, I sort of talk about these things, someone will say, okay, yes, you know, we'll add that to the plan. Or, no, that's not appropriate because there are wetlands there. But, I mean, just as in my formal role, I think would be very helpful, I think would benefit the plan if it identified sites, and I know there are a few that are identified, but I would really, from my own viewpoint, really like to see the portfolio of city-owned properties or town-owned properties identified in that plan. That's my comment. I don't know if you have a reaction or anyone has a reaction, but I thought I'd go on record with that particular point.
Doesn't Berkshire Regional Planning have a map like that? I think we have.
I sure do.
We have that information locally, we can look it up right online. I just, I, I think, you know, to Jackie's point, I think, yeah, people might want to know, you know, what might be coming down the pike in their neighborhood. But, you know, yeah. Patrick, did you want to?
I just, I, I feel like on things like, you know, Chuck's working really hard with Michael on, on the EMS fire plan that now involves Richmond and West Stockbridge potentially, and Lee and, you know, and, and that is years off. You know, so a lot of it is just, you know, it's conjecture. I mean, I think it's to the point of, if something does happen in a building, how are we going to repurpose it or reuse it? But, you know, let's face it, in Penney Park where the, the primary station goes in a regionalization effort, you're going to need satellite locations in, in, in town. Either there or in, like, in the Penney Park, what side of town the final place goes in or what other town it goes in. So, you know, it's, it's, I hear you, but, you know, putting that in a plan where it's so early stage is difficult to, you know, figure out.
It wouldn't be that difficult to include a list of the town properties.
I, I, I understand, but, you know, this is the same list that's on the, available in the Sessors database.
Well, but this is, you know, the plan, it references it, so why not include it?
I think there are, if you, because Michael Canales has gone through all of the town-owned properties with Michael. I think there are, if, if you, because Michael Canales has gone through all of the town-owned properties with Michael, and to see if any of them are developable. And he, he came back with, there may be one or two properties that are very small, that might be possibilities. The rest are all the side of a mountain, so the elevation means, you know, you're not.
I mean, you think about, the last thing I want to do is list Gold Meadows or, you know, the water, the, the, the reservoir into, into a housing production plan, because people are going to think we have a plan to develop Gold Meadows as a reservoir. Michael said there was basically nothing that, that we currently own. You know, there's a couple items, titles, never know.
There's one right by the Curtisville Bridge.
The sign's bad enough.
Sorry, I couldn't resist. Okay.
Sorry, we're a little sunless in town, I think.
All right, thank you very much.
The only other comment, I, I think, is that there's been a great deal of responsiveness in the plan with respect to notifying abutters of any potential.
I couldn't hear the beginning. Do you mind starting again?
Oh, I say, I think that there's been a, a lot of positive direction in terms of notifying abutters of property that may be developed. I don't think the plan has really completely fleshed out how that notification process will occur. Like, for example, on Glendale Middle Road, if there is development, I think the Conservation Commission has a process in which abutters will be notified, but this plan talks to that. And I'm so happy that, you know, language is included with respect to early notification, but I don't think it really fleshes out how that would happen. And it may be that, I don't know if Karen or others have had an opportunity to really think it through, but I do appreciate, you know, the acknowledgement that working together with the community in these efforts is something that is very much desired by those making the decisions, as well as those most directly affected by it. So I have to run, go to another meeting, but thank you all so much. You're great.
Jackie, Jackie, quick, quick follow-up question, I could grab it later from you if you want, but why don't we talk later, because I'd be interested to know a little bit more about what details you're actually looking for?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to talk.
All right.
Thank you, have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you, good night. Okay, anything else? Anybody else have any comments, questions? Nope.
The, the, I'm sorry, the surveying that you had done up there on Glendale Middle Road?
Yeah.
If that differed from the town, because we just had all that G, G I S mapping. It differs from the town G I S mapping? Does one override the other, or?
I don't know the answer to that.
The survey, yeah. We don't know?
G I S is not a hundred percent. You really do need a survey. That's what the survey is for, and then they can go into G I S, but as a Realtor, you don't count on it completely.
Eric? Randy?
Just very.
Please come up and introduce yourself.
On that point, my name is Randy Warner, and I'm the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and I just would like to offer my congratulations to my colleague, who has worked extremely hard, who has no idea how many hours Jan has put in.
Yes.
To this effort, and to which we in the trust are very, very grateful. But your question, which is, an official survey will be the guiding document. G I S is what it is, but it isn't, isn't legal. And the ultimate determination is the survey registered in the land court in Boston.
And that's what your survey is now registered?
No, it's not.
Oh.
We had a survey, and one of the questions that we have to go through, because this is land that was once, I'm talking about Glendale Middle, Middle Road, which the nakers here are most interested, and we've tried very hard to work with them and communicate with them about the project, but the effort, it's been in one family for many years. The Morris's bought it rather recently, and it hadn't been surveyed until we, and we've only done a partial survey. We haven't done a full state yet.
Oh, okay.
So we just did the front part of it, where there were some.
The Glendale, or the Cherry, or the Cherry Street side, or?
No, 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 the Glendale Middle Side, the entrance piece, because there, over time, had been quite a few changes to that piece of land trading that went on among the, the previous owners.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good. Okay, so I think we're, we can wrap things up here, and there's some more, you know, small pieces of information that I'd like to, to see incorporated, and, and I can work with you on that, Jan, and Patrick, I might be in touch with you, too. Okay, if there are no more questions, or?
So Kate, I would like to ask when we might, if we make the, the changes that we've talked about tonight, when we might expect to be able to come back to the planning board and ask for approval of the housing production plan? We've been working on it now for.
I know.
A year.
I know, I know, so let's, you know, I'll be in touch with you. Let's, you know, wrap up these, these various different things that have come up today, and I'll be in touch with you, and we'll, you know, we have to see what else might be on the agenda. Right now, I don't think there's anything, but, you know, we'll, we'll work on it, and I don't dawdle on these things. I do take care of them, and I'll be in touch. All right?
Thanks, Jan.
All right, so I think next on the agenda, we have agenda items for next meeting. Is there anything? Liz, can you do an update?
I probably, yeah.
Great, okay. Carl?
I'd like to comment about the new directional signs that have suddenly popped up.
We'd have to put that on the agenda, but we can.
Let's do it.
List you on the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay. The three signs, yeah. Anything else?
How do you feel?
Okay, so I'd like to.
Talking about short-term rentals?
I think this is a little, let's get through this first, and then we'll, yeah.
Kate, a quick question on Carl's thing.
Yeah.
If the planning board wants to weigh in on the signs, you might, I believe there is, some folks are going to request that that go on the Select Board agenda. Personally, I would.
On Thursday.
I would love to hear from you guys.
Yeah, Tom just is, I think, probably sending an email tonight or tomorrow morning.
I'm just saying, I would love to hear what the planning board's official thoughts were before we were asked.
It's not on the agenda?
No, not tonight.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, if your next meeting's the sixteenth, you want to have that recommendation before, because our meeting isn't until the eighteenth.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for agendas, you know.
I know, I just told Carl I'm going to put it on the next.
Isn't, isn't, this is like our meeting on Thursday, the third?
No, Thursday is the fourth.
The eighteenth.
Oh, Thursday's the fourth. Oh, yes, it's a holiday.
Where have you been?
I'll show up if you do.
I don't doubt it.
Have patriotic songs, you could say.
So, yeah, no, he's just asked to have it on the agenda, and that's what I'm going to do.
Yeah, no, but I just feel like if you, if you want to have time to write up your thoughts, it might be great to then ask the Select Board to delay to the first meeting in August, so that we actually can take your thoughts into consideration. I've heard from a lot of people on this issue.
I think, I think they are, the folks who are concerned are asking for July eighteenth. So our next meeting is.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, so I can write it up and send it in.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so anything else? Okay, before you make a motion to adjourn, one thing I wanted to bring up, this is an administrative thing, is planning board schedule. So in order to sort of, my feeling is that what we can do is we could probably consolidate business such that, without delaying on any requests, and Mass General Law protects applicants on that by setting timeframes for certain types of requests, but my feeling is that we don't necessarily have to have a meeting twice a month. There are times when we might be able to do, you know, given the business on hand, have a meeting once a month. And, you know, one advantage is making it more possible for, you know, working folks to be on a board. If it's possible, there are fewer meetings, and that, you know, I know when I was talking to people who might, thought they might be interested in running for planning board, they said, well, how often do you meet? And that twice a month sometimes is just, you know, ah, I don't think I can do it. So I think it's worth just, you know, we won't delay business, I assure you of that, but if there are times when all we have is something small that doesn't need, is not time-sensitive, where we could potentially go to, you know, just meetings as needed, and ZBA is doing this, Select Board is doing this, and it just seemed to me like something, you know, certainly I would be interested in doing, but I'd like to hear your thoughts.
There's nothing before us.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not going to.
Yeah.
You know.
No complaints?
You all. If there is something, I would really feel strongly about taking care of people's requests, if there's one on there.
I would, yeah.
I think need-based is, is fine, you know.
I was under the impression, though, that we were going to be looking at bylaws that needed to be updated. So if we're only meeting when it's needed, when do we get to work on bylaws that need to be looked at?
When we need to, when we're ready to, you know, and for all I know, that'll mean we're twice a month. But, you know, if we don't, this stuff doesn't happen overnight.
It's also something you can put on next week's agenda, or next meeting's agenda, if there's something you wanted to discuss.
Okay.
Could do that.
I did talk to Gary, and he, he agreed, he's supportive of, of this idea, so. Anybody else? Eric?
I'm fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I make a motion that we, going forward, and we can always reassess, you know, going forward, we schedule our meetings on a need, needs-be basis.
As long as we don't have a need every week.
Anyway, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Hi. Opposed? Okay. All right, so with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, everyone.